All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:19.
Are we recording video?
Yes.
Uh, so, um, would you call the role, uh, Madam Recorder?
Alderwoman Payne?
Here.
Alderman Malone?
Here.
Alderwoman King?
Here.
Ashmeier Adams? Alderman Johnson?
Can I just ask a question?
Hmm?
Where is Ben?
I don't know, I've reached out to him multiple times. I'm not her back.
Number six, meeting of seven that he's missed.
Uh, Jerry, you went by his house not too long ago. We'll, we'll, we'll look into that. Everyone could stand, um, if you would leave us in prayer and then Sloth, then if you would leave us in the pledge?
In the name of Jesus. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, in the only way we know how, asking you to please forgive us for all of our sins. Lord, we thank you, God, for your grace, we thank you for your mercy, we thank you, God, how you look beyond our many, many faults and you see our needs. Father, Lord, I ask that you will bless each and every person here and the balance of our families. And Lord, as we go through this meeting, I ask, God, that you will guide us and direct us in the path that you have us to go. Every decision we make, Lord, I ask, God, that it will be pleasing unto you and I will be so careful to give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise in Jesus' holy name we pray. And everybody say amen.
Amen.
I'll play the lead.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one session under God and the Bible, the Constitution and the Constitution of our own.
All right. We'll go straight into our first session of public comments, if anyone would like to speak. As there isn't anyone who would like to speak, let's go ahead and discuss the budget. I am working with the new copies, so remind me, please, where we left off?
Jerry probably will know that that's we, uh...
Jumping Jerry?
Yeah, I, I do believe, did we not skip the police department or did we catch them first?
We, we did.
I believe we're on page seven, which is water service.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Now, I'm gonna ask again, are we going to embrace the rights of water and sewer?
I don't think we'll honestly know until we get everything else secured and that way we'll have an idea.
But, I mean, water and sewer stands by step as well into the channel funds?
No, but I, well, how would you like to handle that?
Well, I would say that once we get through with everything that we put into the budget, we need to see what our numbers look like after. If we're over, then at that point in time, we would need to have that conversation. Do we wanna look at what we can cut or do, you know, would we wanna look at an increase? And so that would just be the conversation we had, so, yeah.
Well, only, we have a couple of things in there, I mean, like you say, it's separate, so, matter of fact, the other one, but, um, the thirty-five percent of the, uh, city managers comes out of the water sewer fund.
Right.
So that's, uh, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. There'll be an add on there and, um, then we talked about adding a person somewhere over there, so...
No, they're, they're a different...
Okay, which distribution or what was going on?
Yeah, no, the only one that changed was that thirty-five percent.
Well, then which fund did it come out of? Did it come out of streets and highways or...
I think that's correct.
Or state streets and, uh... What were they, uh, what they able to move from over into?
It's under highway.
General funds. Oh, okay, right, would it go up or down, I see that we have one that could see, so, that would put us at, um, nine quarters of the podium out.
Nine including the vacancy?
Nine including the vacancy.
Well, yeah, but that's really what I said, that would include.
Yeah, so we have a total of nine of the four.
And, well, right now, total of eight.
Yes.
And one, with an additional one.
That's correct.
So how many people then would we have in, oh, okay, I know, I know who they are. We have the five people right now, that's Gary, Alan, Trevor, Arnold, and, but Trey's gone, right?
Yes.
So Trey's, that would be vacant.
Correct.
Okay.
And it would be Chris, Chris Arnold.
Chris Arnold.
I have Chris and Arnold down here.
Chris and Arnold? No, Chris Arnold, okay, just making sure, 'cause that could be two people.
Chris Arnold, Chris Arnold.
Yes.
See, you all know more by names than I do, so, um, and sometimes we call them by their first name, sometimes we call them by their last name. See, I'll get me confused, but anyways, uh, but on that, uh, then, Christmas bonuses, that is for five people, and the insurance, let's see. We, we have to go, we're gonna have to...
What page are you on?
Insurance, uh...
We're on seven.
Four. Well, well, I'm going to Jerry, I, I jump that, okay. Well, I'm just trying to kinda figure out, that comes out of general funds, so that's how we're doing it on that one.
We did, we finished four.
Highway and streets, general funds.
Yes.
All right, then I'm ready for page seven.
And we did five?
Yes.
Yes, all right.
Did five, six is blank, so you don't have to say.
Okay. In the, um, first section, under revenue, it's revenue. Do you think anything will change in that? Sharon?
Well, on the grant, really don't know on that, to, we, yeah. See how much went, we spent, and then look, try, yeah, plan. So, we may have eight hundred thousand, but it goes out, we have to pay it out. And TDA gives it back to us.
Does it look like water sales and, or city and sewer? I know it on here, it's looking like it's almost same as last year. Is it like it's up or down or?
Was that under appropriations?
They're...
It's under revenue?
It's about the same right now.
Right?
Yeah. It's about the same thing as estimating of twenty twenty-five.
Well, twenty twenty-five, though, we have two hundred, two million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand. This one, one million, I didn't know any of that.
The grant changed.
There's five hundred thousand dollars difference on the grant there.
Well, okay. All right, my question was going to be, if we have to pay eight hundred thousand out, we would have to endure, clearly, we do have to endure. About eight hundred thousand. But then we're just, as you said, once we keep plugging these numbers, and, uh... Okay, the water treatment plant, um, where is, where, where did you actually find that in you?
So it's on the next page. So if you look at the appropriations on the bottom, those are the cumulative totals of each of those separate budgets. It's just easier for, you know, than at the bottom there, we see the total, that's where our budget numbers are coming in at.
And if you look at page eight, at the very top, it says water treatment plant, fifty-two, one hundred. The next one is sewer treatment plant, fifty-two, uh, two hundred, and then so on, so that's just... And that's in a nutshell. All right, water treatment plant, so page eight.
Excuse me, but we are saving money with the water, right? On what, we should be, I asked, uh, it's been a few months ago, about, are we buying less water, are we saving water, are we doing better? And I was still, yes, so it... What?
I said it's right here.
I know, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, but when, when they, when they start working on our water plant out there, that water plant's gonna be down for a couple of weeks.
It is.
And we're gonna be buying water.
You're absolutely right. And so we're trying to like estimate what that would be, but we could be down for several weeks.
Right.
Right, but I know, I know that they're hoping for two weeks, but I have no faith in that at all.
Well, you know, just like everything else you do.
No contracts come in on time, nor do they come in at bid. That's just a reality. But to be down there, if we have to be down four weeks, we're hurting.
Absolutely.
And we cannot even predict that.
The ad for the bidding was okay today? The ad for the bidding?
Yeah, we got the approval, um, for the water treatment plant today, and, uh, they've already turned around and got the ad together so it can go out for this weekend and so we can, we can get it rolling. So hopefully, once those bids come in, we'll have an idea.
TDA selects the contract that I've said for it, since it's gonna begin to take it, but also select.
And we do have two meetings set up, did you see that, the eighth and the seventeenth? All right, so with water treatment plant, salary?
We're probably gonna be paying Terry about, uh, the water plant?
Correct.
Where did Wes step in all this?
Sewer treatment.
Sewer treatment plant.
Yes.
What about Sandy?
In the administration.
Administration, the Water Sewer Administration.
Okay.
Last year, she was, she was under water sewer.
I mean, she's still technically under water sewer, but she's under the administrative of the water sewer.
Right, which gets paid out of general funds.
No.
No?
Water sewer.
Okay.
That's, that's the fourth one here.
All right, so, we're only looking, those two numbers there, one of them, the salary is for Terry Bane. And, um, then the other one down here for sewer treatment plant is Sandy.
Um, on lines one forty-three, retirement, you can take that number out, right?
Yes. And don't we have retirement up here?
Workers' comp? That, that, yeah, that was what I was referring to, one forty-three.
Well, one forty-three, will you also take it out of, uh, one forty-three and one forty-three? They both have the same number.
One is Wes, one is Terry. Under five-two-two-zero-zero sewer treatment plant, that's Wes.
Well, I thought that was, um, now I'm confused. I thought we were paying Sandy out of these two.
No.
Right, our next page.
Sandy is...
If I may, so, see that you've got that number there?
Yeah.
That's for the treatment plant?
And that's, yeah.
And that's for sewer? Then there's another one that's for the sewer administration?
Page ten.
Wastewater, okay, collection.
Page, it's actually next to...
Next, we got Sandy.
No, she's on the next page.
Page ten.
Who is then on wastewater distribution? Um, uh, under five-two-three-one-four?
That's...
Page nine.
That's David and Louise. All right, that one.
Okay, and what are they being paid each right now?
They both have thirty dollars amount.
Which is six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars per student.
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, if you're on page ten, you might as well kind of, get rid of the retirement and not in ten.
Well, gonna take retirement out of all of these, so, actually, under five-two-one-oh, one forty-three, we can strike out that retirement figure and then also strike it out under five-two-two-oh-oh, on the one forty-three again.
Right.
Drop that out.
Let's, let's go back up to five-two-one-zero-zero water treatment plant and start with retirement, 'cause if we start skipping around, we're gonna lose our minds. So workers' comp, I think that's just one person, the unemployment insurance, training and education two thousand, um, the contract service, is that, what is BPDG Badger?
Badger is one of them.
That name?
I think that's the one that they do.
The license and all Badgers and license.
Yeah, they call it something.
Sales license? Or license?
For the, uh, water, the, uh...
We're paying to use someone else's license?
No.
No, that's different.
Oh, okay.
Certification.
This is for, um, the read, the, so, Badger meter where they can do the readings and the recordings.
Yes.
Oh, right, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So it's the Badger, Badger meter?
Meters.
Reading license?
It's the meters, yeah.
It's the meters, okay, that's what I said.
So electric, the water treatment plant's using about ten grand in electric?
Wow.
About a hundred and ten thousand dollars in water?
Now, that's what we buy.
Purchased.
And now that is a proper...
But she was putting it in Hextree, if the water plant goes down, spend another twenty thousand dollars, is that right on the show?
Well, this, this number is based off of what we've seen over the last year, so we have seen an increase.
That one ten is not gonna cover being down for two weeks.
Eight thousand, what was going on?
That's a hundred and five, but it's what it was.
Which means we have been using fine and large water.
I, I don't think it makes sense to raise it now, I mean, is purchasing water a capital asset? Probably not. Well, I guess y'all decide. Do you wanna factor it in or?
Factor in what the...
If the plant goes down, I mean, you wouldn't have enough, you wouldn't be able to factor in a number.
So what I'd like to see is the bids come back. Um, I mean, we can plug a number in there for how long we think it's gonna be down, um, but chances are, once we get to that point, we're probably gonna have to appropriate funds to it.
Right.
Sharon, you have a real good idea of, like, when we are down for an entire day of water plant, what that one day costs us in purchasing water from?
Alan, Alan does all those figures.
Yeah, how much it is, like, how many charges?
Alan collects in those numbers. Okay, so Alan, Alan then is critical, uh, then for where we, how we're gonna extract that number? 'Cause he could base it on, first off, what it is per day, and then do it times ten days, and then we have that number, and then extend it out for another week, and then we have another number there, and then extend it out, if worse comes to worse, four weeks, and then we got that number there. I just suggest that we look at all, anywhere from two weeks to four weeks, and that way we'll have a much better idea of what kinda money we're talking about, seeing.
So, you get with Alan about that one?
Yeah, but he had given me a cost...
Per thousand, or maybe...
Yeah, but, uh, I don't see it on here. I'll have to get some on that.
Okay, and then telephone, four thousand?
Is that a landline or cell phones? And is it just one person?
Uh, two forty-five, line two forty-five.
That's the electric and the stuff that they have on the...
Well, there's electric, there's water, and then there's telephone.
It should have their cell phones.
Yeah, it's got, yes, their, uh, cell phones.
Just Terry or everyone?
Electric for the, uh, things coming into the...
You mean like the Wi-Fi?
Yes.
Yes.
It automatically brings in and tells you why.
So the internet, telephone, and cell phones.
So it's landline?
Yes.
Wi-Fi, cell phone?
Yeah, 'cause Alan can call into the water treatment plant. And then, um, chemicals? That looks like a very...
It has gone up.
Low number.
It looks real low, doesn't it?
It has gone up, um...
Big time.
I remember we were doing that last year, and chemicals going up. All right, now, the estimated for twenty twenty-five, don't we already by now, can we not run the number right now and know exactly how much we have spent so far?
Twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixteen twenty-six.
So we're already at twenty-eight thousand?
Yep.
So we know that third thousand is not gonna cover it.
That's right.
Let's add Jen to it.
Well, it's twenty-eight thousand and some was the end of, and this is the fiscal year.
But it's almost three thousand dollars, right, yeah?
Ten, ten's kinda high, no?
I think Jen will cover us.
It'll cover us.
Okay, it will cover us.
And I guess you...
We know something else is gonna pop up.
So we, I mean, we can, you can put ten there, but again, if we come back and we see that we're over budget, that might be one of those things that we might want to sell down.
You went up five thousand, basically, by the...
Well, we can either do, if you all feel uncomfortable, we could do eight instead of ten, like eight thousand.
Well, it should, it does even, that's probably, we can go down.
Let's do ten, and then add the analyzed sewer.
So it's at forty, right? Right, household janitorial supplies, five hundred, new apartment clothing, Terry's, um, that safety gear.
So that's clothes, vests, um, and any protective gear that he wears.
All right, um, repair parts for the water plant?
Since we're going to, then, rent that unit? Again, we need to, that's what, dangers?
We don't know when. That would be a nice, you know, a nice little five thousand dollar bonus, and we find out we don't need it.
Bad debt expense. I really don't have a bad debt, bad, like, bad debt, I don't have a bad debt.
Because, uh, people don't pay for waters.
But I really have to, to, to pay them. So we need to, you know, right, and then... Okay. That's what they be, is water, silver.
Yeah, we just want the age.
If we have to ask of the number of people who are getting water or just helping?
But, like, we, for, you know, before you give a hunter, maybe, and they help people out, they all, and they can't find them.
Okay, what about farmers' act, that includes farmers that bring, like, the water?
They don't like to get on this.
You have overnight deal with them, but don't we account that to you? All right. I just, you know, the only thing customers that probably do that has, um, have to change.
Yes, not what's, you know, about, according to that, but, yeah, any of the ones that we have that aren't offering a miracle, uh, that we can start.
Other fixed charges? I gotta name this right. Right, and then change the rate of payments? Okay, um, sewer treatment plant, Valerie is Wes. Call-out pay. Overtime for Valerie?
It really... And then?
So, I'm on call about three bucks, and then I make up a call-out, because a call-out fee plus they get overtime, so they call.
The then, uh, exit, uh, two thousand dollars. Working, the water plant.
You don't call them. He's on call for the pumps, but then he's also on call for the general on call at the same time, so if there's somebody else on the call, but they need a pump or truck, he gets called.
Has he down one thousand, two thousand?
Yes.
And you, we're gonna be, uh, we need to, uh, we're in the process of, you know, whatever, that's, most... We need at least one or two more things there.
So, um, Christmas bonus, the way five, health insurance, workers' club? Retirement, keep it out, just, uh... Oh, you need this. Sewer treatment, Bristol, is that for water?
Like the rock?
That's like the rock. Oh, uh, did you see what Tony asked about, how's that getting to you?
All right, when was the last time they went up, uh, there, when, when did we come from? Uh, Bristol?
Okay.
Every year, so, like, and the, and I haven't seen it yet, but they go up every year. Nothing came like that, number, twenty thousand bucks. Well, we not present, have you?
Well, again, what point, what point?
Uh, we don't know what that one twenty number, twenty twenty thousand, they, uh, not testing. I don't know, maybe the PM and B just told me, just, John, they die, they die, okay?
Okay, so, eight nine, Valerie's got, uh, here, um, is it call-out pay and overtime, do you think?
No.
David shows on, Louis puts on, so...
They don't get call-out, they don't get, they don't get call-out, they're not on call.
The only time that David got overtime is if they're working a job and they got to finish it, they work a little bit, they're not, you know, they, they're not being paid.
And Christmas bonus, two, uh, place here, the way five, to help, health insurance.
Take out retirement.
Yes, health insurance.
That can be right, but it's, we got, uh, well, that's, it's one person, so it's probably twenty-four.
Anybody, workers' club, insurance, training and education?
Well, wait a minute, I'm, I am confused, I have Sandy down here.
Page ten.
And I know, but sewer treatment plant, Wes, that I had Sandy down here too.
Just Wes.
That's Wes. So, then we go to wastewater distribution collection.
And that's David and Louise.
And of course, I mean, uh, you all just gave tell me, flip these pages.
Flip it, sister, flip it.
That's where you put in for the city manager? Twenty-six thousand, probably, seven?
City administration?
Maybe it went from one, or you said two?
I mean, it went from two part-time to full-time.
Now, back up here, that one, 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 four, ten, water, water, sewer distribution, uh, thousand dollars for tiny minimum, that's you. We definitely need to do that.
So we wanna give anybody an opportunity for training and education, you'll put it to the seers, or that those ones that offer, I would like to put in there?
Back door. That's your, that's your license?
No, 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 we bought meters before, so, now, we've already put meters up. I don't even know meters, do you need? I know that, that is, that's what that number is for, because it can be, because, I don't know, meters is more money than that. Okay, so we're just watching that one out, this, now, what page do we need to go back to? Can we collect the number back? I don't know.
Well, it's already on there, that was Bristol.
Oh. I know, we're going to go back and add.
We've already added.
So electric's always going to be there, twenty-five, forty-five, all for here, but the last one, four, I don't know.
When you put down electric, electric is something two thousand dollars. Five.
It's the last two years.
No, of course.
Those calls are...
There's a telephone. Just one. And still.
And we never talk about them.
All right, and if you couldn't, you're here, and then you take my pump, that means, for, or the two thousand, okay? The type of, like, the type.
Back, um...
So that would be, you think of disrepair, so, you know, water, once, you, they have the equipment, have the equipment, or you could do line repairs, uh, meter repairs, anything that, pump stations.
And including the...
Yes.
Those parts, repairs.
That's that, of course. Yeah, that's like, you're quicker. Yeah, with water, silver, that would be ones, two, like, one. No, that, I know, I know, that's no, that, you're on the first year, so the gas and oil and et cetera, that's the gas to be, it's about a question, but, uh, uh, I'm sorry?
Yes, so we're still looking at two sixty-nine, two ninety-four, equipment rental, two thousand, clothing and uniforms, four hundred.
Two ninety-four. Oh, I said, I said, place of rental.
Ooh, and then, um, now, uh, other operations wise? Now, three thirty-one, gas, oil, and et cetera. Is that for the people that...
Vehicles, I mean. I think, I think we're spending all, no, we had it, we had gas and oil and et cetera on some other line, uh...
Everything or the agents, that's not good.
The agents, I like to know, but I'm, oh, well, I just think spend it, like I suggested, the other night, uh, you said the bad capability of, we need a month under four, but how many miles does that represent? And that can be connected, right, or gas, I believe that my capital club, none of them in that future, uh, because that's a four thousand dollar increase from last year.
So we talked about that, if there's another place to get it, so, um, highway streets, um, it's three thirty-one, if that's the same number, this is also three thirty-one, so this is all, all the works department.
Yeah, I know, but it's not for vehicles, not with that, it's all...
It's not this eleven plus this eleven, line three thirty-one is line three thirty-one.
Line three thirty-one, that's on page nine, so.
It's all part of the fourth.
All right, but that's part of the state, I knew it was someplace else, but that's page four, that's in highway and streets, but that goes under general funds, and I understand that, but that's eleven thousand also.
We're talking more...
Yeah, we're, and, uh...
Does the department have to say?
None, no. It's just, we are talking about twenty-two thousand dollars in gas and oil for our public works figures. Now, I mean, I'm, I'm, some of this...
They want to know about the mileage?
Well, I don't want to know, like, for this, oh, that, that has...
This is like a big bank hold, this is...
How often do you...
That would have been, I mean, every day, or, or, the, the water, the, you think, stuff, that, there's every replacement line.
And when they have a, a water leak and a sewer leak, I get that, but then when we find water leak, sewer leak, but we're not, I'm not always talking. I'm just saying, I'm just throwing it out there, I won't think that, that, I hear. So where are we, um, was it on page four that we included the many, like, maybe, of your values and...
We didn't put them in there, correct, because they're, they look on the top of, on these, we would just take, how, I don't see that on, but just make the note that we recommend.
Okay.
And that's what you correctly, we were just wondering about, well, like, how many dollars, we drove, or whatever, that, if on the state, and I don't, I can't speak for Allen, I know the police department, yeah, because he, he always gives you his...
I want, I want the public works people, uh, their mileage, uh...
Well, and big vehicles, like, stuff, that, their mileage, they're up to the hour, they're about the backhoe, so, and it comes up decent, we'd like to be together, it's not so much two pounds, you know?
Well, that, that, that's true, it's true, like, I like, it's like, you know, even if it's...
They've got fuel cards, and she can show you what they're doing, but it's, it'll fit down, your mileage, dark, and then you can prove, mileage started, and then be able to pick it up, and it's charged, which does a readout on each car, it's huge.
So maybe you have a version of cars, too?
There is, yeah, that would be a better way to describe it.
So you would have a discrepancy in the mileage anyway, because you're dealing with two coworkers and...
Unless you, if those to be put in a separate category, this, we know, we get charged for these, but we know which vehicle is the one that's due. I'm talking about for all of you, any of the vehicles that they use, I think you need a better place that can, or can be, because, I guess, that's not the way to, uh, to, like, that, you know, you'll get... But it, it might until I'm...
Okay, there's, well, yeah, anyway, stuff.
Okay, so, water, parts.
So we did spend extra this past year because we have to be betting on their assault trial.
And we thought, because, you know, some people see the steel, and they better, see, we, what, um, so... Now, uh...
Repair parts?
I don't know. As I mean, ever, to...
Rental, that's a great impact of the Southern River, other fixed charges, seven hundred, seven thousand, four minutes.
Right, ten, salaries, ten.
Et cetera, so, okay.
Whoa, how many people's been impacted?
The practice, for the presentation.
That's the, I just, I'm sure they have, given him. Might be like, four years, uh, or, um, and I have that chat of, uh, water and sewer, dollar, maybe, still.
That's it, happened, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, I know it is, but I was just wondering, we did a sixty-five, or, I don't know.
They never hold it.
Right, the bigger bit, that we know, we'll place them, well, we save for any last year, because we did pay for it, right?
If we have weeks, they, that's, well, there, yes, she did, my, for now, yeah, it's having an, uh, well, we're in our trouble, well, we're, that was twenty-four, right, for twenty twenty-four, we did.
And then, land effect, and, uh, obviously, um, of course, you were, um, in, the, the, the...
I don't think you have that, uh...
Uh, disability, I'm sorry, disability, disability, if they're...
Why, not that chat, no, we, all, I think, we have a water and sewer.
So, uh, you know, the amount that's here is based off of that overall idea that we have just put in the budget?
Oh, you've got that in that tab up here, I'm sorry, I thought that in, that is for, hey, at forty-eight, yeah, that's, uh...
Is that time, look, that I do.
It's, um...
A Christmas bonus, but you do this, um...
You know, that would be, uh, June. No, I don't think so, we're afraid of that part of the, uh...
We may have looked at us, we had, we had, we had...
Well, we, the news write-up is where we have, I think, yes, we put, the, the, the...
Yeah, we did, so we would actually, we would actually, uh...
That one, one hundred?
Right, yes.
Five, one hundred, also accomplishments, it's twelve, three.
Well, so, let's get our C N for that, now, this, we're going to, uh, charge it for...
So, so it's been twelve hundred across the board, so what, it's right here, or, uh, five, twelve thousand, right here, it's been twelve thousand for everybody, you'll, you'll, uh... So we're just being, one thousand. There's just one question. Um, so, I understand that that is, that you know, the news write-up.
So that's what I asked, did we, uh, were all of those costs a percentage?
So that's why, okay, that's why, that's a one fifty, definitely.
And then what's only here is thirty-six, five, and, um, we had that, uh...
We looked, well, eighteen hundred, um, planning insurance, right?
So see if it does, um, what you do, uh, hearing pumblers, yeah, uh...
Is she the hospital?
Is this the...
No. How about that, beer and that's, uh, now, the...
The quantity, fourteen thousand, that is for...
Get it down, the wisdom, that cost, three thousand dollars, the quantity, it sounds like, okay. Okay.
And the various, uh, um, look at those, uh, uh, that, very, so, uh... That's part of, well, part of, if, that, very, uh, local, uh, that, that, if...
This is, this is, uh...
Yeah, we, now, we're about that, a couple of months.
Okay, so, I'm saying, engineering services, that, across, that's, that's, wait, I don't, that much money? Then, like, what, uh?
Software, it's just some hardware, hardware.
As you know, maybe, as you know, maybe.
So maybe you can, you, I see, but they don't do, like, that, the software, like, the stuff, so maybe more than, structures, you're inside of it, you know, inside.
Office supplies, uh, we got that contract, the, uh...
Now, this is just, like, all their paper, um, and, and how it's all, something, uh...
Office supplies, uh, five, five, then insurance, like, insurance, and that, that, or, you know, insurance, or... What, that's just a, uh, I get confused, I love you, we're trying these people, and you just were a little, huh, hustle here, and we're doing a good job, as we're paying them a general thing, even those who work, of course, you're paying them a general thing, but the insurance, not just the, the insurance.
It's all of our property insurance, that's the, everything, the unrelated insurance.
At that end, it has all of us.
It's all of our real property, um, equipment, everything that's...
The garage, some station, et cetera, have been our land, et, et, and all of our assets. And all of our vehicles, this part, and everything, from that, this, uh...
So everything's covered.
So, well, then, I... Um, so that, that one really is, insurance, uh, right, uh...
There's one, two.
I just think that for months, right? And what's that, if I tell, if I tell you, if I tell you, uh, I mean, that's interesting, in principle, principle, uh, I'm, uh, principle.
That's what you have, or interest, that's, that's your, your actual balance, and then the interest is what you're paying on top of that four, that you have.
Do you know, when these, are subsidies, or do you use?
No, I, in the, uh, in the, 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 each one of, what the industry ideas, I, I, uh...
Yeah, I know, we did, and, uh, three, five, eight, uh...
Well, I say twenty, I can now say, so, that one, that'd be five or a thousand, and that'd be three hundred, and one of them, that'd be five, and then off the, so, these several, some of the others, like, it takes, what industry ideas, uh...
Yeah.
Would I do ninety-four more, or just something?
I think that, I think they'll really cry.
I, that, I, I was sad, and that's in my head, that's what I'm saying, uh...
They serve charges.
They service charges.
And that's four, four. That chat. Let me, why can't we shake their tree and say, you want to retire me? And you won't give us anything in return? I say we threaten a new time.
What is service charges? Is that?
Well, they're charging us for, for our money in their life.
Never been.
Yeah. I don't like that. And that day, that day is also something like that.
Yes, we've got a split.
I don't.
Maybe later on down the road, we can, uh, take now and live at this, get in insurance. Search for another one. You don't have to stay with same.
No, no, I say.
Make it a better deal.
I say search for another company.
Don't be afraid to change.
Other than local government. I say search for another audit firm. Because we've not, not, not. They can't, they should never get you. No, it's true. No, it's true.
A whole lot of business. And then that brown stuff, they don't do that.
Well, Sharon might notice them, but possibly use that they have minded in the rest of audities.
That'd be something good for the city manager to check out.
Well, I'm saying she, the wisdom, that she can relay that wisdom over to the city. All right, now that I've had a heart attack over, I'm going to see each way.
Depreciation. I can remember that call there.
That's it. That's a lot of money.
Uh, yes, and probably. Um, project, extension. You got.
I would say. It's not together. So depreciation, I mean, with everything we're doing from that frame. How? And then we can, we need to talk to. Well, we go with Sharon. Sharon says she like you. That was it. And I was at that. That means.
That's a part of it. So this is the, uh, the, um. Extra dollars. And, uh, for pop. Yeah.
I guess there should be an effective citizen.
Well. But the cost is worth every ten dollars.
Well, it's not going to be more than us. So it's all, you can make it. This year, that's, I think, we need to get all of that. And not raise those, but all, but give it back. Well, even if we just do the big, I told you, let's show them that we love. Well, let's make sure with the wax as well.
Um, if that was lower, if we could, uh, should I pick up?
No, we get away with it. We did that. I thought we get away with junk.
No, it's a.
I didn't know that. Next year, maybe not next year. What's the year?
It's like a thousand dollars, so, uh.
I'm a devil, I know.
Well, there's that, two thousand dollars.
Yeah, so you're talking about how many citizens? So waste management charge is a blackie and a red, five dollars. So they've gone, the drugs are a little too, you're done with, you can't get rid of it. Waste management charge is seventy-five dollars. So don't pick up there. You kind of divide that into all of people. People can get rid of a lot of stuff. It's a really useful thing. Um, you know, and, and you're, you're just. You have one thing, you leave it up, you get rid of it, and it's gone. It will alleviate, hopefully, people putting things out during the year. Um, now, cost, you have to pick up, so what happens is, you know, you do have a piece of fortune picked up. Call ahead of time, get some help, and five dollars. We're still losing out because we don't get that, we get that.
Let's look at it very carefully, because we've got forty-eight thousand dollars in trash. And, but it's the example, which. To this day, I don't understand. I thought that, I'm only. Indeed, we got forty-eight thousand dollars in trash, in citizens, ex-citizens.
Oh, we ready.
So let's be very careful.
We have a lot of. Depending on us being an ordinance, whether.
Well, I said we entered an ordinance, nor did those trash cans.
We might, we might discuss all the details from them. Was it to iron out those details for better than keeping agents, basically.
No ordinance, but can we all send greatly distantly? Oh, it's not like we think of this as a brawl, garbage. So. And I don't mind.
So I took a longer from your website. Trash must be, must be, I believe, trash in the air. Only what within the can, there will be making fourteen, fifteen extra bags. Um, and. We pulled up for a day. Yeah, but are you, there's certain things you can put in your trash can, like the trash before you. And more on some things like that. You know.
All right.
Have computers, oil, and the hazardous.
So we are going to actually have a reset with cost issue. And in doing that, this one, we are going to fill up the trash with ninety-five pounds. And I know with the tonnage, if those will hold ninety-five pounds. And the other ones, the ones, the little ones we had, everybody had, well, thirty thousand.
Three, three, two.
So even if they had two, they're going more garbage. And, uh, they, they do not like it. That people's stuff in the brawl there. And will we stand behind them? And when, when that truck pulls up to that house, and they go, get that thing, and that stuff's in there? Are we going to back them up and make them right on the ground?
Me too.
Well, I'm asking, are we going to back them?
Michael Harden wants to. They, they're asking for that. Okay, so that's where the T P B, the ordinance. So here's the rules. Violate the rules, here's the outcome. You know, they get warned first on it, but then after that, you decide to order.
But you know, the same that happens, you're going to get a phone call. If the cops is going to get it, then it's like, you're going to get it. And that's why I'm all about sending these out to each member of the state. The dues and the dunks. And please know that if you violate your garbage, that, uh, been raised, real long.
So that's what we talk about, using the, the awareness campaign, you will, send you out a trifle or some other mailer or something that, um, is very descriptive. You know, here's, here's the plan.
Things.
Here's where you go into the plan. Here's where your can will go, you know, the samples of, because there's a certain way, you have a can at the row, all that kind of stuff. Your dues and don'ts. And then just basically all the information of vice mailers.
Right.
Everybody, a head pass.
Right.
And, and not call the cops.
But then, and then here, that definitely needs to be put in there. And that if your, if your trash is missed, this is due. And then we stand, uh, not in a, a trash bag, required free bag. I mean, a tall kitchen garbage bag for a big white one.
It could be your brochure back from Walmart, if you have that signed up, as long as, as long as there's no loose garbage.
Right, yeah. So they will actually attract the good city in the little, little bags.
Some, some. Ones in a bag, one in a bag is what it is, not the loose trash.
Oh, cool. That's good.
You can put in a poor trash bag.
Exactly. Well, I mean, I do. I, I spray my fridge with denim and a towel, uh. I'm very nice. They pull my, get my trash, you know. And when I break a glass or a plate, I put them in like the dicks of those plastic bags, where they don't get cut.
I don't know, like, maybe that's why I'm sorry. What is about a flag? Maybe you're fortunate, so like, we think of your.
And that's next to magic, we're back.
Yeah, part of the, the, let me take.
Wait, wait. Or wait with the price and the, and probably the, the dollars. In.
From God.
If my demand. If we.
Big three go Christmas, so I still think to.
All right.
Okay, well, okay.
Well, Sharon, it is, nice to discuss, I guess.
All right. Interesting, and do you have a fun?
What is that?
Nothing.
What Sharon's saying, we do a couple hundred things. That was a good thing. Maybe a hundred quick.
In, in the bank, sorry, I should have clarified and said to you.
So, uh.
And, um, you know, first.
The one we do. Can you use the, bring it appropriate?
Sixty-eight thousand, if that sixty-eight thousand is what we get in skin, after we take this deal.
Yeah.
So we, were we not going to put anything up there in the? Let's see, actually, that says twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I think that's.
This is saying twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. It should be twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm doing.
Yeah, yeah, sure. It's a trip.
Well, I know I had picked up on something like that, so.
What can we do that?
Eighteen.
Well, I was looking at it. I didn't know I'm going that happy, right? And, and then it also, uh, that was the same for page eleven. Twenty twenty-five.
It's going to go with surplus.
Twenty twenty-six. Of course, that changes twenty twenty-three as well, already twenty twenty-four.
Page thirteen, page twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, um, revenue.
What?
So this is, of course, subject to change, um, depends on what they cost the government here.
Well, they got lucky last year.
Ain't no such thing.
That's sixteen thousand plus. So, uh, they, they're going to guess that they're going to be taking this thousand. That's, uh, well, then, hopefully get a lot, fifty, or a thousand. But you know what I'm saying is.
Well, it'll get worse. Thank you, I didn't.
That's what I know, but I mean, I'm just going to say this. We want to put that in the wish list, that will make the reality of it. Get nothing. That means to get it. He's what I'm saying, he's not saying, you're going to get it, you don't have, it's going to come short for all of you.
Right. Next one, operations, which have, uh, sort of give a part. Here, that makes. Certainly that falls under this, this part of the report. Has to be related to drug courses. So machinery, equipment, things like that, has to be related to that. So like this year, we did, um, the science refresh. And we know that's going to cost you. A bulletproof bed.
Really, particularly, you're going on this road, run, you made a bulletproof bed.
We weren't, we weren't, but those are on a rotation, they're on a five-year rotation, and most, everybody here hasn't.
Well, what about, well, we just got new body.
Not everybody. We're replaced on the past five years.
That's body camera.
This is all a body armor. Okay, body armor, okay. What about Jason, is that not? On the turn.
Uh, did they, uh, that come out of there, or I guess the driver's still making stuff, but, uh, you have a problem.
I know, it doesn't come out of there. It doesn't come out of there.
Yes, okay, it is a simple.
Dress is just red.
I was trying to.
Try to stretch.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm not being vindictive, but take a look at that, uh, proposed. That D should be, just extend that, that column out to where that D can be up there beside. Where it says proposed, you get a proposed. Well, I mean, it's getting from there several times. And the same, uh, goes for.
Oh, that's just, I'm just thinking you're. It's kind of cheap.
Well, well.
We're trying to.
Well, and, and it's also page eleven, I mean.
We'll fix it.
Okay. It's done here. Well, now, I know. All right, now, go back to page ten.
Sound is standing?
Yes. Now, uh, the top, uh, audited estimated, the estimated, should that be proposed for twenty twenty-six? That's just an estimated.
You answer, I think you.
Hey, I said, no, not that, no, because people haven't called them yet. And they're going to be put right back in there deciding why, that's true. Uh, that's why they got salaries. No, they come out of the way.
I see it.
It's, it's, it's proposed.
I see that.
Okay. It's just that it says.
Yeah, I'm being proposed. It should be proposed and then.
And the D. And, and that goes, that goes.
Bring your hand.
And, just do control F, don't be. And nine, eight, and, and seven.
Go to the screen.
There. Well, you're gonna, you need to do it for estimated, so, okay, but call it a call. I've done it, I don't know how to do this. It's no big deal.
Well, it's not in stone yet, right?
No.
But these are, these are things that will be.
Exactly. They won't be cleaned up, it's a deep, hard first time I come.
I cleaned them up online.
I, I would like to be able to clean them up on my own. I'd like to be able to do a control plan and save myself. We just thought a hard time. I wanted that, the doctor.
Can I ask you, um, can I ask a question? Not concerning such a. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but, uh, we've been here for a couple of weeks. Have you ever thought about, sometime you see a painting company, they have extra paint. That over, and you deny it. You ever felt that bad?
I have, so I've been telling you the big project there. I have spoke with someone, well, back, and even with my driveway. They had some leftover, they called me, uh, to receive that some, to give you a deal on it. You ever felt that? Yeah, checking with a painting company, taking one load at a time. And you know if they've got something left over? I'm going to purchase it.
I mean, purchase it.
Yeah, I'm here. Well, I'm saying. One load at a time. I mean, there's wage of eating these, um, you know, that. We've been working on it for a long time. And are we going to come to each other? Say, hey, you've got any, you know, we like to, you need to be not. So that means. Now, wouldn't you?
Especially down here, when I'm not just sending calls.
Well, I mean.
But I wrote straight, they're not here.
Yes.
Because he had weighed down, so I remember Leo Wells calling me when I was ready. And she had close to her, and she said that a car would fall, it was, it was.
It was that, right. And then one, I was running on the way there, it was like that. They didn't go wrong.
Yeah, so I talked to Alan about those things, even. We talked about this, my experience was a few days ago, about seeing if we could, if we were able to solve. Yeah, that's how we were too.
We would, I, we would be in the same line, especially for this one. We just called and asked, like, the, and she just, she just. And she said, no, yeah, that, that, that will take, they reached out to me. Yeah, okay, so he, he called, he reached out to me. Yeah. He definitely. Well, he had reached out, he said that he had been trying to get a hold of city manager and.
Well, he had reached out, he said that he had been trying to get a hold of city manager and the mayor, and so on and. Anyway, he said everybody was on target, and she was having a emergency, they didn't even know, so he reached out to me, and, uh, uh, every time I called down here, he reached out. You, you called yesterday and I called you back. He didn't quite understand, but he reached out to me and, uh, it was a big dealer in the showroom, and he said he was always told that if there's a period, he's supposed to report it. So, and so for the three days, and I think they called seven counties, and then he called me, and, uh, I told him that one of our officers was graduating, so I knew that the chief was in there, I didn't know about you guys.
Oh, that day.
But to make a long story short, I, I called down here and spoke to the aunt, I was, I just want you to know, she was very concerned. She got hold of Alan, Alan, so I appreciate that, and he said, let her know that you appreciate it, Alan's a roommate. And he didn't understand, I mean, he said, he called, there's nobody that can call. And I apologize, and he didn't have your number, is it okay if I give your number?
It's on there.
He said that he tried to call.
Oh, he didn't, but the cell phone is not.
Okay.
It's okay.
He said, he used to have everybody's number, but now he don't. So he called me, and the graduation, it was, I had a graduation, and I have my phone tied off, but we, we, I took my, I called him, it was driving.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for taking care of that.
Of course.
Well, we do. You know, we're strong when we stand together.
Well, there is something else, and, uh, we need to find. And it makes it good on the action. And, uh, six days later, Michelle's contract. And the decision is not to be made. And it's not there for me. And Michelle, when you ask me, what are your plans? I mean. I mean, to come, look, the way it is right now, come June thirty.
That will be her last paycheck. Well, she's not sure her contracts.
They agreed until June thirtieth, so they can have somewhere.
Well, technically, I agree the trade is involved by the government city manager, and I would say a long term agreement, that's two days or three weeks, whatever that does. So that was my original commitment, plus me. Now, if, if that's good with everybody, I'm happy with it, if not, I'm good with that too. As I say, here as long, and it was my satisfaction.
With the, and, and with the June thirtieth, though, um, the salary, right, am I correct, Jerry, or you just?
That was for the salary, because it would be the only numbers that could.
Well, how?
That can work.
Well, that's the way that I understood it, listen to your.
So what can we put on the agenda?
And we have. There's discussion and action. Our June vote is that might say that we agree the time that she has in the end, now she wants to do it very young, she wants it. But we got, I'm kind of first for June thirtieth, so, you know, no matter if it's the, how it can walk around down here, it's often June thirty.
Well, technically, if, if it's not on June thirtieth, July first, that's the health, it would be the new budget, and then we're going to have to choose a salary.
No, because we're going to choose, we're going to. We're in our timeline now.
Well, what will we have a discussion on it, and we make sure.
Well, that's, the whole, that's, that's my whole point, and discussion is not to be had, the board has to make decisions, so, the most important thing is. Or one of us will make a motion at the meeting, or you said we could do that for office for us, or as long as we can get another board member to distract information.
So I'll have to check and see if you're up for special call, we need to help, help with.
Well, we've been having that special call, maybe.
Okay, you're trying to say.
I, I mean, look, I know that we decided it was going today until June thirtieth, and that at that time, it had to be re-discussed, and no matter what, it's gonna have to be discussed.
I agree, we, we really do need to, uh, discuss it, and at the same time, we got to always remember, we gotta work something out, we can talk about it, because we don't want to pull that into that narrative, you know, we gotta keep.
It is just going to be such a short period of time, and, you know, we're, we're in.
I understand, I understand.
And, and, and we're.
Sorry. Yeah. And that's why I said we can discuss it, and I think we can work something out, hopefully, Lori, I mean, Mayor, you're down here, right? You're kind of overseeing the fine office and everything, is that correct?
I'm, there's nothing to oversee, they, they have.
Well, then you don't have to be there.
Then, if, if there's nothing to do. I mean, he is down here, and, and the mayor, and still waiting on us.
Okay, well, they just go.
Well, just put it on there for discussion and action, I don't want to talk about it down here tonight.
No.
But I wanted to bring up some, the fact that you lived in a city that said that we're not going to say.
So if there's nothing for you to do, I mean, and you kind of got everything going, right? That needs to be.
There's, there's.
There's a series to do. Okay, that's why I asked.
I oversee, Sharon oversees the girls out front, so I'm here just doing it, there's a need.
She's not just a one-time, she has a lot.
She, because you need to know, we, the board needs to go.
Okay, I'm trying to.
But before we really move forward, we need to make sure everybody is doing what they're supposed to do.
Hmm.
Okay? This is, you know, so we need to know, I mean, you know it?
Yeah, we're gonna have a second session, we have a comment, yeah.
All right. So we just kind of need to know, I mean, I don't know exactly what you're doing, you know, I mean, I, I did, but you just said, ah.
Well, I'm not overseeing, and we.
Okay, because that's, that's. Well, our city manager is supposed to be doing that anyway, he's over it, that's why we wanted the city manager.
Right.
Okay?
But I'm not, so I'm currently assisting her, um, making sure that there's a body here when people need, there's some people just want to come to the event, some people just want to, and I've done a lot of that, but also, um, double check, not double checking, um, like working with Mattern and Craig and, you know, getting con, because I have to sign contracts, so I need to be privy to everything that's going on, and what, what she does, she makes sure that I know everything, so if she's not able to be in the building, or able to go to a meeting, then I take over.
Okay, okay.
And then I'll take over.
Okay, so we got.
That you're, that you're doing it, and the mayor, that she.
Yes.
Yeah.
City manager.
Right.
And I will give her this credit, she's very clear in every conversation.
Yeah.
To lay that out with people.
Well, it needs to be.
And I appreciate you keeping us updated, thank you so much.
Well, well, that today's first update we've gotten in life.
Well, whenever I ask her a question, she'll answer.
Not me, so.
Michelle, my turn. What, um, major projects are you involved in that requires more time, and, you know, stuff, I mean, I'm talking about the daily, whatever, you know, little things, I'm talking about the major stuff, I know you're working on the IT stuff, and the water plant, and, and, and I know you've got several others, I just wondered, what's, and you don't just ask it because you probably can't think of them now, but I'm just trying to, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's several things there, uh, I mean, between some different policy things that we're working on, of course, we are working on the trash can situation extensively, uh, IT is absolutely another big one, um, and then, I, I would just say, like, internal things, like policies, procedures, coming up with, you know, looking at what we're trying to accomplish over the next year, and setting those building blocks to get them done, um, so, uh, yeah, there's probably, I could probably get you a better list, but just off the top of my head.
Yeah, well, unless you, well, unless we think of it.
I guess under IT is, uh, cybersecurity.
Yes, absolutely. So it's, it's a conglomeration of things, so there's.
Just like getting one.
We, we got them, um, so now we've got to review them, um, for accuracy and several other things, so, but there's, there's a couple parts to that, so you have your physical network, then you have your security socket, um, then you have your physical security, by way of like security cameras, things like that, um, we've also looked at the potential for doing access control, which would be further down on priority list, but it's there, um, and then also getting a new mixer, getting new microphones, getting a new AV system in here, um, so I've got about six different pieces of this to put together, or to, to review, that they've put together for that, to see what we can afford to do this next year, and then what. Obviously, the networks, the network, physical and security side of it would be the first priority for that. And then depending on budget, where we can fit the rest of those things in.
I'm just a little lost, now, exactly what do you do, Lori?
She have to shoot that.
I'm just a little bit lost, I'm a little.
They both know what each other's doing.
So.
So I do like the organizational, operational, she does the more higher level with, um, all of our partners that we.
Yeah.
Um, you know, solving.
Working together.
She does like all of those larger communications with.
Well, she knows what you're doing, and you know what she's.
I copy her on everything, just so she has awareness, if something happened to me.
Right, she needs to be able to step in.
She knows, she would know.
Absolutely.
She's totally aware.
Right.
They don't care.
Just about everything, yeah, and you feel good about it? Are you comfortable with it?
I am comfortable with it, it, it's, it's a, it's a good dynamic, it's a very good dynamic, okay.
All right.
You know, I just maintain what I always say, I just want transparency, and I want everybody treated fair, and you know what I stand for.
We gotta do some, uh, working, we know.
And I'm here if you need me.
We know we're gonna have to do some work on our, you know, on our charter, and, uh, someday I'll send the invitation of, of what Mayor does, that, that, what the city manager does, that day is coming, and it will be coming, just so. And when we have, we know that we have. And, and ordinances, and all kinds of things, and, and, because, but you can do it with, with a simple order, and they, I mean, that, I mean, I'm trying to make that coming. But they can be done now.
We're covered.
We're ready. Although it's your job, so it's only gonna be done by the place.
Right, and I'll be honest, you feel good about it, if we got a good department.
Yeah.
Just in a phone call away. Um, so, I know that separating the, the, um, mayor and the city manager is very much at the.
It's.
It's, well, it's paramount, but here is, here is what you have to remember, if something happens and the city manager is incapacitated, or, um, has an emergency, has to leave town, or, God forbid, becomes ill, or passes away, you, if, if your mayor is not completely updating on everything, you will have a huge lapse. So you can, you can take the physician and flip them, but if that happens, there's no overlap, in other words. So as much as it makes no sense that the city manager and mayor should be the same person, it's just for situations that are extreme.
Yeah, that's all the shit.
Right, and it's.
It's something. Unless you like not to go into the hospital for a third day.
Yeah.
I would, like most places, wouldn't make you get down all the way here, that when no one, your city manager, and that, they would just, uh, messages, or just be, um, be asking that.
Then you don't want that, it can't, it can't function that way.
But then you also need somebody who can sign POs, make decisions at that higher level, and, and keep things just moving forward, so, I mean, you've got to have a redundant team.
Exactly.
But I think the point is that they're, they're just, that distinction has been really permanent here. And it just needs, the people need to follow the tour, I mean, the town, the tour, if you have a mayor, have a town manager.
I don't think so.
Exactly.
Always make sure. Always make sure that your position as city manager has been filled.
Right.
By the case of emergency, the mayor can skip in.
And then, and then it should just be, like, you know, if your town manager quits, or passes away, or your sport says, I gotta move, if something happens.
Then you just should automatically kick it to the end of the way, when you say it, and you're out with the, the mayor, and then, he works.
Yes, and then you start the process for recruitment.
Yeah. Exactly.
Mayor Board.
And then she said, you really need to be updated on what's going on, like you said, you never.
She does, she does, she does. Who are you?
Well, not, not exactly, so, as the town manager, the town manager has a responsibility to bring things to the board, when the town manager deems it necessary.
So, but ladies, it necessary, now I got some problems.
I understand what you do, but you have to understand that the board, um, is making sure that things are being done, and that is, that's the limit, we're not micromanaging every thing that's done, but I think big things that happen, when there's a sewer overbridge, or, and a, a road, an incident, road closure, things like that.
I, you know, I don't hear somebody order that to do that, I don't, I can't do anything like that, but.
If it's something.
If it's important, and even though it might be some like. Because you've got to. That's me, she's like, you know, that's.
Yeah, and that's for monthly. That's for monthly.
But, you know, I, I, I just grow up.
It's been a good many years.
And, uh, it, everything goes back to the city manager, of course, of course, so, so you got, you got it, but.
But it also says that the board members are to act, and all of them, and it is, that's not import of public.
But the year, I think I'll try to do a better explanation on that, because the way I have read, or you have read it, it's still redundant, once I'm there. I didn't know.
Yeah, let's do it. So let's go ahead and have our second set of public comments. I was gonna say, sure. Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna be standing up, but I can get, I can sit back here for three minutes, a mile shot.
All right.
Because, you know, it's not mine, you pull up.
Very good, you just stopped.
The pay, I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna probably talk for about three minutes, so if you want to get in, go ahead. So here's what we're gonna do, I just want, this is what I want to talk about, and I'm not disrespecting anybody, I'm just placing facts, this is the city, this is the town, this is our income, this is my income, and every officer's income. All right, on Tuesday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, approximately, oh, eight oh five hours, Lieutenant Bays of the Criminal Investigation Divisions, embarked on a crucial investigation into fraudulent activity, where a resident of Bluff City fell prey to a scam, the victim, deceived by the suspect's pretenses, was coerced into mailing a substantial sum of twenty thousand dollars cash by USPS Express to an address provided by the suspect in Spartanburg, South Carolina. In a calculated move, the suspect instructed the victim to destroy the postal receipt containing the tracking information to cover the tracks. Lieutenant Bays, with his swift action, promptly established contact with US Post Office, initiated tracking of the package, by narrowing down the time of service and obtaining the tracking number. Lieutenant Bays worked in tandem with the Bluff City Post Office Manager, Eastern Tennessee Region Postmaster, Greenville, Spartanburg, South Carolina Postmasters and Inspectors, including the Spartanburg Police Department, to successfully intercept the package before it was delivered to the suspect. Through collaborative effort, efforts, Lieutenant Bays and South Carolina Postmaster successfully seized the package, which is currently being expedited back to Bluff City Post Office and ultimately returned to the victim. This exemplary investigation and cooperative endeavor demonstrates the effectiveness, swift, swift action, and collaboration, and exceptional police work, which culminated in the recovery of stolen fines and preservation of justice. The prompt and professional response of Lieutenant Bays and the involved authorities serves a testament to unwavering commitment to combating fraud and protecting citizens in Bluff City. So this is a lady that lived up on, uh, Ridgefield. So this is a lady that lived up on Ridgeview, seventy years old, she valedictated a stamp. She sent $20,000 cash to an address in Spartanburg. Bays spent all day this morning trying to figure out what to do. And when we were able to get that money, and money, her money's on the way back. Sat there and watched that lady cry out front of the door for ten minutes yesterday. And because the money was gone yesterday. So here's what I want to ask you guys, retention. Retention is the biggest expense of the police department. If, we, we have a guy that just graduated the academy. That guy, Jordan Cunningham, after he goes to the academy, we buy all of his equipment. He goes to a four-month FTO training service. Before he even serves the community, one minute, we spent $24,000 on him. If he walks out tomorrow.
No, 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 we have his contract.
He has a contract, but, and, and here's where, here's where the, here's where some red tape with the contract ain't worth a hill of beans. Because he goes to the academy, the academy is so long that he has an extensive amount of comp time built up that the city owes him because that's time he worked. Now, what's the con, the contract file, what is it, $2,000 or something like that?
It's prorated based.
It's prorated, and so if he, so he's not even started, so if he leaves tomorrow and goes to another department, we're out, we are out $25,000.
I'd say we've got a current contract, that's why I say.
It ain't got none of those contracts, you got to pay the man for what he worked. But here's the problem.
But you said a buy on it, $2,000.
Yeah, well, we owe.
And it's worth, we owe him, he owes us, they eventually. They wash each other out.
They, they do wash each other out, because we owe him, uh, I believe a hundred and sixty hours of comp time. You do a hundred and sixty hours by what he makes, it's gonna probably end up more than $2,000. But here's another thing I want to say about retention. And every officer we have at the police department right now, except for the one that just graduated the academy, is eligible for this. Uh, and this is, this is one I just pulled up, uh, twenty minutes ago. It's a lateral transfer that Elizabethan Police Department does. Any officer with two to six years' experience, that's everybody but one, everybody but Jordan Cunningham, can walk in with single health, this is on their website, so if anybody wants to pull it up and read it, this is copied from it. Single health vision and life insurance offered at no cost to you and we participate in TCRS retirement at nine percent contribution. And the rate of pay for two years' experience, which everybody here but one person has, is $50,788. I could walk in Elizabethan Police Department, as a corporal with six years' experience, I have twenty-one. I could walk in at $55,046, but here, let me show you this. This is a, an officer that I just talked to the last meeting, I didn't get a chance to say it because I didn't have all my, uh, i's dotted and t's crossed. An officer with the same experience I have. I love Bluff City, but there's come to a point in time where these guys have to feed their family. And here's the problem I have. I make $45,320. I can go to Sullivan County right now, I make $64,272 in my experience. Now, there's gotta be a fine line between serving your community and feeding your family. That's all I want to say. When you come to vote for this, you get what you pay for, guys. And you, do you want to, do you want to lose $25,000 every time somebody walks out? Because it's happening, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. You're gonna go to, you're gonna have officers that walk in Elizabethan Police Department. And, and here's the facts, people can say, well, Bluff City's small. Bluff City does this, Bluff City don't have this, Bluff City. I worked for fifteen years at Carter County. I've been up top of Buck Mountain at four o'clock in the morning on, on standoffs. And I have been in the same type of activity here more often than I did in fifteen years in Carter County. That's facts. I got paid for it, I got it done. I just entered a house up here where a shooting was two months ago. First one through the house. I don't know if I got dead bodies in there. So at the end of time, in a line, money's money. So you could put us in a, in a line with Bluff City don't do this, Bluff City don't do that. A bullet's a bullet, and on traffic stop, you can easily get shot. We can easily shoot people. I've, I've drawn my gun out here five times. Twice since Carter County in fifteen years, five times in ten years I've been here. So that, to say that, that you're a small town here and, and why we don't pay is, uh, more wise, ridiculous.
How about the other pay, the, uh, Alan's room, see the rest of the pay.
It's been, we just be perfectly honest, it's low across the board. It's terrible. I mean, look, I want to have a wish that they could, a wish we could be more competitive. But because we are small, we keep it.
But you're going to pay $20,000 per person every time one person leaves, go to Elizabethan City or Sullivan County or Thomas City.
Well, I mean, luckily, we haven't had this week's turnover.
You know, you have.
But in the past, like you say, they would get through the academy and it's just repot. If it's worth anything, they would hire, and Bluff City was a warehouse for the places, you know.
And, yeah, you know, you know why they're only right now? It's because they're waiting on, uh, July 1st coming up. If this right here, if, if.
Administration.
This ridiculous five percent, you're probably going to see some turnover. I can't guarantee, I don't, I don't, I can't say what needs to happen, but it's ridiculous. In my opinion, uh, when I can make $22,000 more and drive ten minutes over towards Sullivan County, I could see if it was five or six thousand dollars difference, I owe you the $22,000. And this guy's a sergeant, I can give you his name, his name's Mike Owens, everyone else probably.
I don't know how we can keep him off. I, I, I still.
Well, I think a big key to keeping them is respectability. And I think this whole process of the budget has really, and, and I, I'm speaking because for exposed to about this. Employees feel very disrespected, they feel that the work they've done, um, isn't, isn't important uh, because of the, the dialogue that we're having, we produce people and numbers, and I know it's a business, but we've got to remember that the work that these people are doing is, is what has made Bluff City a desirable place, or people who are making $20,000 less than they could be.
The, the fact that I'm one of two people that was wrong, that, I'm just being real clear about. I suggest that our chief of place and our assistant chief of place may be in control, I have a day away.
I disagree about a hundred percent.
This wasn't about any bias, this was as a whole, they feel like, hearing this and hearing that, that the way that it's, their, their jobs and letters are being talked about, that they don't matter. They feel like they don't matter, they feel like the board does not have their back, they feel.
I think you know me better than that.
What now?
I think you know me better than that.
I believe that they know me better than that. Because what you're saying is then, then that we can't come in, we cannot have these things in here and not be transparent.
No, we can not, we, we have meaning to be transparent, but we have got to respect the, the people who are doing these jobs or who are talking about.
If they're doing their job, they deserve to be paid.
There needs to be a wider perspective on support rather than using terms that say, well, because and we can't, those are negative terms, you need to be able to show these people that you support them. They're what makes us powerful, they're what makes us.
I'm not sure that I use any because or we can't or whatever.
I'm not, I'm not saying that to you, I'm saying that just, uh, in reality, when we speak about things, we need to be saying it in a way that shows, it's one thing to just say, I support people. There are actions and the things that we do is what actually shows that we support people, which is why we started having these budget conversations. Yeah, five percent to start, to start, and then, you know, if, the, the problem is that we're a small town, well, then it's our job that we need to dig in here and say, well, what are we willing to do to cut, to change, to take care of our people who are taking care of us?
Look, the sad thing is, is that our infrastructure is horrible. Our roads are horrible and they need it there enough, they're not gonna get fixed over. We're lucky when you get grants, and I think you search now there for every grant you.
I won't, I won't, I'm, I'm checking my emails, I'm on Grant Finder, I got every one.
Yeah, I mean, this is what we need. I would love to pay them more money, I would, but we don't have it. Just don't have it.
But we can look into.
We got to do that.
Best we can to make sure that we are supporting and that any chance that we do have the opportunity, we make these people competitive because they work their tails off.
So it's the public works.
Well, I meant in a whole. I'm talking about everybody here, I had a conversation with Alan today, he.
Look, I know, we say, we say thank you, and, and then, then we're gonna have to get a chief chief that says, maybe, uh, at this meeting, you need to say this and you need to say that. I am not wrong. Well, this, uh, right now, you're saying the real thing here, uh, money in their pocket. Where we can get from?
But I'll tell you all in express, this is the type of people who do this, this is what we're gonna lose. And we're gonna be in a mess.
People that care.
Extreme mess.
People that care. I believe in.
And then when this lady comes in here and we got a $20,000 back, I'll go, I should become the board meeting, and then she can explain it to you why you brought those money, because if there's no money, you better pay money. But this is the people we're gonna lose that does this job.
We all have to explain to them that there is no money, there is no money.
Well, you had it, and not only that, really, police department, they can do it.
You know what I'm saying? And yet, we hold on three quarters this year, we.
I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying.
We, we.
We, we're basically now up to a standard that, uh.
They should be.
That thirty percent of the law enforcement, ten seconds up to now, so.
Do we do cross training or anything like that, you know, you talked about her and somebody or something. Hey, if everybody, for say, for say, this lady's up with an office and I was doing one job and, uh, she was doing another job, say there's somebody at the window. I mean, can't anybody go to the window? Okay, maybe we need to push that, if you don't have anything to do, come up there and work the window. I mean, it was very bad.
Well, if.
But I mean, public works, they are, they might be hired in the streets and highways, but yeah, they go out. Future.
Sounds like I'm working the window.
It's the same thing here, those ladies, they also.
Everybody does, I mean, the whole.
Oh, yeah.
So you can, and then, and then, and then, and then, and then, and then, and then.
So like, the law's saying it's not useful. As they say, you're a seal of the area, square for you. I try to accept it.
I wish.
Well, I know they do, wish, but I mean, I have to.
Lori, I mean, if you're the American, you understand that, you know, work the window. I mean, there's ways to do that.
When they were all tied up one day, there's a dean, you try to get one of the windows.
And I, and I said, I'm just gonna go to the window and say, hi, they told me, who are you?
Exactly, exactly.
You know, that's what you do, somebody else do, wait on somebody there. You know, me, I offer ladies, and they, um, if they're hungry, can I run out for you? Can I get you some lunch? And, uh, well, I know you. But you know, that way everybody can live that hell.
The book of Angela can store it.
Down, wipe it.
Let's go, guys, end this game. You didn't, uh, is that the last comment? Any other, any other comments?
You don't want me coming, huh?
Yes, you're a citizen.
Hi, it's Jenny.
Say again, nice meeting you.
Wow.
Appreciate, you guys, y'all would have been able to handle it when I read this here, the stuff that she went through.
What did I hear?
Oh.